It's the ones who read on the Internet that if you challenge it, the cop won't show up and then you lose.
Right, exactly.
And it's like, that might happen in the big cities around here. No. It doesn't really show up.
I know, because a couple of people at Oakland's husband was their police officer. And they're talking, and one of them is the second shift, or third shift one. She's like, he's forever getting two hours of sleep and having to wake up before the court.
I felt really bad. I had a deputy a few weeks ago. He was in trial all day long Wednesday.
Caller meeting to order. Tonight is Tuesday, August 15th, 2017. This is a regular monthly meeting of the Austin City Planning Commission. Looks like we have three items, open public hearings on our agenda for tonight. Before we do that, I'll ask commissioners if you had a chance to look at the minutes from our July 11 meeting. Any corrections, changes, additions, anything to? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lutz, and a second from Commissioner Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda. And this item is continued from our July 11 meeting. To consider a request from David Olson on behalf of Sunbelt Motors LLC to continue auto sales at its current location in a B2 community business zone. This request is pursuant to City Code Section 11.56, Subdivision 1.
If you recall, we had this matter presented at our last meeting. I'll just kind of give you a quick refresher. The property in question is on the overhead right now. It's off Oakland Avenue West, north of Apollo Liquor. The property was recently purchased and as a result of that, we became aware that it required a conditional use permit, although it had already been used as a used car lot, and that is the proposed continued use. A conditional use permit is required in the B2 community business district for car sales. The petitioner wasn't able to make it here at the last meeting, and I believe that there were some questions the commission had for him. The... If the planning commission doesn't have any questions about the... Any more details about the conditional use permit, I would just go into the recommendations and then if he has any questions. Was anybody not here last time? I think we had a full commission last night, okay. The... Should the commission approve this requested conditional use permit, we would ask that the commission give consideration to the following conditions with approval. The off-street parking be compliant with the building code and local zoning ordinance. Two spaces would be required at this location. The 20% green space be required, and that requirement is actually already met. That no more than four or five cars be for sale at one time. Hours of business would be clarified, and the onsite lighting should be downward, if any is added, to minimize any adverse effects to adjacent residential properties. And then just another reminder, last time we had one comment from a neighboring property owner concerned about having a mixed use at that location, which would be residential and commercial. The property is... A portion of the property, the building, is rented. And then there's also the car sales business at that location. That the person... I believe the person renting the property will be managing the sales at the location. The property was used for that previously, and there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that prohibits that. But there was that concern mentioned by the adjoining property owner, Mr. Howe, that there was some kind of prohibition for that. You know, if it's a state statute, we would leave that to the state to determine.
So as far as you're concerned, that's not an issue then?
No, that's not an issue.
What we're looking at, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
But if the planning commission felt that it should be one or the other, that could be a condition of the permit.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me or for the petitioner?
On the staff recommendation of fortified vehicles in the space, I guess, of the driveway that you would say, does that also include then parking for whoever is living at the facility? Or is that on top of any additional cars from there?
So yeah, that's a good question. So there are two spaces that have to remain open for customers. And then during the off-business hours, which I'm not sure what the business hours would be at this point, they would be able to park in those spaces. Otherwise, there's on-street parking available for the residents, but correct. I mean typically, the residential and the commercial would both require those open spots for the people living there or the people coming to the business.
Any other questions?
Is this a recommendation, Holly?
Yes. No. Conditional use permit is your decision. Your decision is final unless it is appealed.
Does this meet with like that 30-year plan? Are we looking at moving more of this to the business side versus residential in this area?
The area along Oakland Avenue West is, as part of our future land use plan, considered to be commercial. I mean, is planned as commercial, so less residential than commercial in that area.
Okay, this is an open public hearing. Anybody from here that would like to address the commissioners? Are there any questions from the commissioners? I see... Mr. Olson? Or who's? If we... Do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add, I don't believe.
I was just gonna... Are there any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Olson?
I think the... I'm gonna try to use... I worked with Lee King, who was owner of Sunbelt Auto for about five or six years in the business with him. I don't intend to do anything different than we've done in the past. It'll be a change of ownership and a different guy living there, but it will be used the same way as I've enjoyed using that place in the last five or six... I should say, five or six years out of the last eight years. So... I don't... I did talk to John Howell, and I think it was a more general question for the planning commission on how they may interpret the rules from the state. And it's more of a planning commission here for the conditional uses. And the state will hopefully guide us in the right direction on the other rules and regulations. I'm sure they will when they issue the license if we're approved. But I'm available for any questions if anybody, if I can help. Thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anything else? If not, I will ask for a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we approve the requests and cite the A through E items, the conditions that are in the staff report to be included as part of the request.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lutz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nelson. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is another open public hearing to consider a request from Kevin Larson for a proposed mini-storage development in a B2 community district. A conditional use permit is required for... Or a conditional use permit is required for storage facilities in a B2 district.
Okay, as noted, this is from Kevin Larson and John Bergstrom, who wish to establish mini-storage at the location on your overhead. This is just off West Oakland Avenue West, next to the Smart Transit facility. It's currently an empty lot. Was used, I believe, as a parking lot at one time. The conditional use permit requires the same considerations as the previous. This particular location is currently zoned B2, a community business district, which is one of our commercial districts. The surrounding land uses are commercial. To the west, south, there's some multifamily residential. To the east, there's commercial. And north across West Oakland is some residential property. The... This use is allowed in the B2 commercial district under warehousing, storage, and wholesaling, but does require conditional use permit. The thing that you should reconsider in determining whether the use is appropriate or what conditions should be required are whether the use will create an excessive burden on existing parks, schools, streets, or other public facilities and utilities which serve the area. The use will be sufficiently compatible or separated by distances or screening from additional adjacent agricultural or residentially zoned or used land so that the existing homes will not be depreciated in value, and there will be no deterrence to development of vacant land. The use, in the opinion of the planning commission, is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and to the existing land use. The structure and site have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent properties. The use is consistent with the zoning purposes of the zoning chapter and purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. The use will not cause traffic hazard or congestion. Existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected because of curtailment of customer trade. The use will not result in unnecessary destruction of natural features. Other consideration would be the geographical area involved. Whether such use will depreciate surrounding area, character of the surrounding area, demonstrated need for such use, and whether proposed use will cause essentially any nuisance in the area. The planning commission may impose additional conditions, considered necessary, to protect the best interests of the surrounding area. If the planning commission should choose to approve this conditional use permit, I request that you give consideration to the development of the site, requiring the hard surface material, asphalt or concrete, approved for off-street parking, and the area in general. Landscaping would be provided and meet the approval of the Planning and Zoning Office. And then this is... Was included with your materials, but shows kind of a layout of the mini-storage on that lot. And the proposed project proposal is here if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions at this time from the commissioners? Is this site... Is this the site of the former car dealer, or am I thinking of the wrong one?
You know, I don't know. I honestly don't know. I did look it up in the address file, but I didn't see anything that indicated what the prior use was.
Is there a building on the site now?
There is not.
There's not? Okay, so then that's not the one I'm thinking of, okay.
There's a lot of car dealerships along that area though.
Yeah, one is vacant. I didn't know that was...
Yeah, and I think they've come and gone, and there've been a few.
Okay.
And it looks like, based on the drawings, that they're proposing a fence surrounding it?
There would be a fence, yeah.
Is there any private... Other private screening, at least to cut off the Bremerton apartments?
I would have to have Mr. Larson comment on that. Is there... I guess there's...
There's already a fence on the backside of the property that borders the apartments. And we're gonna leave that existing fence there and add on to it for the rest of the project.
Okay, are there any other... Should we have... Do you have any other questions from Mr. Larson? Okay. Okay, well, if there aren't any other questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I would make a motion that we move to approve, including staff's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Commissioner, post them.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Seams. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just note, I didn't note this on the earlier matter, but the conditional use permit decision by the planning commission will remain, unless it is appealed in 15 days, to the council.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is again another open public hearing. To consider a variance for 2403 15th Avenue Southwest from the Austin City zoning code, Section 11.01 subdivision, allowing a maximum coverage of 1,584 square feet in an R1 single-family residential district. Petitioners Perry and Kimberly Byham are proposing to add a detached 36-by-44 garage to this property.
So this is property of Perry and Kimberly Byham, and they're located in the, we would call, I guess, Austin Acres area, in the southwest area of Austin. The city limits are this dark pink or red color here. The property is surrounded on all sides by residential. The petitioner has requested essentially a 1,024-square-foot variance from our city code, limiting the total aggregate area of all accessory structures to 1,000 square feet for properties under one acre located in an R1 single-family residential district. 1,584 square feet for parcels exceeding one acre. This particular parcel... As noted, this variance is a request for the construction of a 36-by-44 detached garage addition. The property in question is approximately 36,653 square feet in area, which is just under an acre. Point... I have .85 acres. With this proposed detached garage addition, the total lot coverage with structures would be approximately 7.6%. 40% is the lot coverage maximum allowed. The structures currently on the property are their dwelling, which is 792 square feet, an existing detached garage, which will be removed, that's 380 square feet, second detached garage, which is 440 square feet, and then the proposed addition, which is 1,584 square feet, with a total of 2,816 square feet. If we looked at this as a one-acre parcel, the variance request would be 440 square feet. But again, I just cut it off at one. If it's one, if it's under one, it's under one. If it's one, it's one. So I... You know, I mean, it's close, but that can be a consideration, potentially. This overhead that I have here just was a kind of a project just to see what was existing out in that area. So Mr. Byham and I went through and figured out, based on, luckily, the county assessor's website, had square footages for all the detached accessory structures in this area. So the numbers in red on this drawing are the square footage of detached structures in this area. And the circled property is Mr. Byham's property. And the number that I added in there, blue, was just... I just added that in there, and that's the total accessory structure number, square footage, which would be 2,024 square feet if the variance were granted. The... Let's see. The planning commission... This is a recommendation to the city council. The planning commission must decide if the variance meets the statutory requirements for granting a variance, which is that it's in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. That's consistent with the comprehensive plan that the applicant has established. There are practical difficulties in complying with the provision. The property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the provision. The plaintiff landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner, and the variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district, which it wouldn't in this instance. The variance would not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. And I would say that's what this overhead is alluding to, is the current character of the neighborhood. The economic considerations alone shall not constitute undue hardship. And just in this instance, is this proposed structure and character of the residential... Of this residential neighborhood. And the... In conversation with Mr. Byham, and I just met his wife tonight, the petitioner has a number of recreational and other vehicles he would like to store, protect it, and keep the property from looking cluttered. He could store... He can have additional vehicles. He could store some of those vehicles temporarily or permanently on his property outdoors. Depends on the intended use. Recreational vehicles have different rules than just your regular car, whatever, truck. The... I guess that's it. Do you have any questions for me? And then Mr. Byham is here to answer any questions if you have any.
Is this one that required you to notify everyone within a certain...
Yeah, it is. I'm glad that you reminded me of that. I didn't actually for... I didn't receive any comments on any of the matters that we had tonight.
Okay. So again, this is an open public hearing. If there's anyone here that wants to address the commissioners about this issue?
Well, I'm Perry.
Okay, do you wanna...
I'm the guy that's doing it, so...
Okay, you wanna tell us... You wanna tell us all about it?
It's my wife and I. We just wanna improve our property. It's been a 22-year project, and now it's time for us to actually park our vehicle in a garage that we can use for that. But our daughter's raised, grown up. Now we're trying to make our home our home without having to do all the miles with our daughter anymore, so... And we're working with our neighbors. My neighbor to the west of me, Mike, is here, and been talking to my neighbors for years about doing this, but we're finally at that point at doing something. And I just wanna do something that's gonna fit in our neighborhood. So I'll be working with Fred, you know, when we figure out what I can build. He's gonna sit down with me, and we're gonna look at it, tell him kind of what I got in mind, and we're gonna build it around the way he wants to see it built, so we can go through the steps quicker.
And Fred is our building official.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so this...
So we... He'd be looking at our code, you know, building code.
The size... The size you're looking at is what we're seeing here, though. The actual dimensions is what you're going... You're...
Right.
Your goal, your... Okay.
Yep, just so we can have some use, so...
Okay.
Get a few things of ours that I have stored elsewhere in one spot, so that's the goal.
Okay.
And then if you wanted to see pictures of the neighborhood, I took, so you can actually see what we're kind of looking at.
Sure. You could hand them, maybe start with Commissioner Seams.
Okay. They're on the backside of the pictures.
Thank you.
Gives the address.
Okay.
I just had a quick question as far as access to the new building. I think if I remember right, it's gonna be replacing an older building, so is it basically the same driveway that's already set up there?
Yep. If you look right here, you'll see the house right there. The garage right behind it comes down.
Okay.
Well, we're passing those around. Are there any other questions from the commissioners as far as...
And with the variance, the commission, should they decide, they could add conditions to that as well.
So it's behind the other? It's gonna be behind the other?
It's gonna be behind my house.
Okay. Well, it looks to be, at least to what I looked at there, in harmony, I will say, with other properties, and certainly the... Our map here shows that. Does that stir any other questions, or are we... Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request as submitted.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lutz to approve.
This one's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation. It is a recommendation.
And we recommend council approve the application.
Okay.
Second.
Please note that.
And also, if you could take into consideration the requirements of the variance statutory conditions listed.
So one through... Yeah, one through three?
Yes.
Do you wanna note that?
Yes.
Noted. And did I hear a... And I have a second from Commissioner Nelson. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'll just announce it to everyone. So then this will go next to the council on Monday. And our meeting at that time is also start at 5:30. And if you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
Other business?
All right, we just have... We just have one last item. The city of Austin has been selected... We were selected a couple of months ago to participate in a program called SoulSmart. It gives each participant or participating city or county six months of technical support to achieve a minimum designation under the program. SoulSmart is a national designation, which recognizes local governments for making it faster, easier, and cheaper to go solar. Our region includes three current designees who have already achieved a solar designation, which would be Duluth received. They go... They're bronze, silver, and gold. Duluth has silver. Minneapolis and St. Paul each have gold. For designation, each participant must reach a specific score in various categories, including permitting, planning, zoning, and development regulations, inspection, construction codes, solar rights, community engagement, utility engagement, and market development and finance. Sharing this attached memo from Brian Ross, who's at Great Plains Institute for planning commission's review meets one of the criteria. Let me know if you have any questions or comments. We will be looking at maybe incorporating some of the suggestions from this particular document into our code. Right now, we do have a solar ordinance. The report here was from March of 2015. We have now, while we're working on... Actually, I just got an email back today from the last meeting we had with the organization. They will be assisting us with drafting or creating a solar landing page, and we have now a specific spot for people to look up solar information, particularly about permitting requirements. And it's just a really neat program and gives Austin some national recognition once we complete those steps. I think we can easily meet bronze designation, but we're shooting for the silver designation.
I know this has come up to us before, as far as if somebody wanted to install a solar panel or something on their roof. So did we finalize then a policy or an ordinance on that?
Yeah, we do. We do have an ordinance, correct. And then we do have a permitting checklist for the rooftop specifically, and we've recently developed one for pole-mounted solar as well. We're still kind of tweaking some of the things that are required. The... This program is specifically for smaller-scale solar, so there is some com... There are some comments in here about like community solar gardens and larger solar projects, which, you know, I'm sure we could get assistance on if one came our way. But this is more particularly for residential or small, small uses like out at the Nature Center or at the Humane Society and some of those places, locations in town. The... They hope to have our project, well, hope to have us designated by October. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
Does that designation then give us, oh, any leg up on projects or...
The way it was described to me was, you know, it doesn't... It just that it makes it like a shovel-ready essentially for solar. That we're ready, we can bring the solar. And there's not a lot of additional development to do. And there's not a lot of additional development to do to determine how solar could be implemented in, in our city, unless it was a larger, like a larger solar project, then there might be a little bit more additional decision-making involved. The, but for big projects, we do a lot of, we have a lot of conversations upfront with trying to find appropriate sites. Actually, I think this document says that there was one proposed in our growth, Austin's growth area, but, which would be actually a designation of the county of one of its zoning areas. So it was, somebody looked at a place out in the county. And then, of course, it's good for things where, like they said in here, like an old landfill or something like that, a site where construction would be difficult if you're looking at a, like a building or some kind of other more intensive use.
Okay. And Austin Utilities, I think I just read something, are they offering some sort of program?
Yeah, at the time that this was written, they weren't.
Okay.
They're up doing a community solar garden, but now they are. They do actually have a community solar garden project right now that people can participate in. I think if you go to their website, you could get more information about that.
Yeah, but it's, it's not in Austin.
No, it's not located.
Despite the title, the, the building or the, the solar garden itself is, I think the first one's near Owatonna somewhere, and I forget where the second one's, because they're doing it in collaboration with like 11 other utility in our area.
It happens to be Princeton, Minnesota, my hometown.
There you go. So we are part of, yeah, our utilities are part of SIMPA, which is-
Southern Municipal Power Agency. Southern Minnesota Municipal-
Can't remember, but yeah, it's a group of utilities from various cities.
Okay, well, it sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, just for your information, no action needed.
Okay, that's it then?
Yes, that's it.
I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Burrows.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Postman, in favor?
Aye.
Nobody? Nobody. Opposed? No. Opposed?